Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask for is agenda changes.
Staff have no changes to present to the agenda this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, secondly, I'm gonna open up for public forum. Anybody here wishing to address the council? You'll be given five minutes to start with. If you need more time, I'm liable to extend it because I'm good like that. Julie will keep track of time for me. And whoever's first, please come to the podium, give your name, address, and let us know why you're here.
I'm Bud Bryant, 429 Harvey Street, Halsted. Just come before the council to address the problem we have with the dogs running loose. Mostly pit bulls and stuff, very vicious attacks. I was attacked myself with my son's small Dr. Spaniel. Jeff Van Horn, Deputy Sheriff of Harvey County. It was his, his dogs and from what I've been told, the first time they'd been out. And first offense or whatever. But it was a very vicious attack, drew blood on me and the dog. Read through the state statutes, Harvey County statutes and all. There are several towns in the state of Kansas that it's a one-time deal. They draw blood on a human or domesticated animal, they're euthanized. From what I've been told here, it's a one-time deal for the city statute. That if there's a one-time offense, they can no longer be in the city of Halsted. Now, I noticed, I don't know, I haven't read that myself because I tried to look it up, I couldn't find it. I don't know if that's true. It's correct. So then I hear, you know, my sons got dogs, pit bulls, running loose in their yard, chasing down the alleys. My secretary at Bryant and Bryant, 703 McNair. One day trying to go to work, the dogs in her yard wouldn't let her off her porch. So she had to go back inside, you know, and then that's the south end of town. And then we got up on the north end and then Mrs. Crable is attacked last night and viciously attacked. And if it wasn't for her son being there, she'd probably be dead. Something has to be done and I'm wondering, why are we not enforcing our statutes of these laws and stuff? This is getting out of hand. We used to have a animal control here, which at that time seemed like you really didn't hear about it. When somebody's dog was out, somebody would call, it would be taken care of. You know, they'd get it, stick it out in the pens until they come paid their fine and what have you. But now it's not that way. Something happens, it's like, oh, well, you know, if I was viciously attacked, if I went up and attacked a, somebody in their yard and hit them, I would be in jail. With a big fine though, but it's not for a dog. You know, where are we drawing the line here? This is getting to be ridiculous. And thank God, Mrs. Crable didn't die last night. Because that's what's gonna happen if we let this go on. And I'm just asking the council, let's address this and let's get this thing taken care of, nip it in the bud right now. Not tomorrow, I mean not, let's don't wait. Let's get it taken care of because this is definitely a problem throughout the city. There's more than just one. You know, and we need to figure out what your statutes are here. Let's hold to our guns and let's enforce this. Thank you.
Thank you, Bud. Next. Name and address, please.
I'm Ray Bryant, 404 East Ninth Street. Want to address the dog issue as well. Like he said, I've been chased down my alley on my motorcycle by a pit bull. It's the same pit bull, it's gotten out several, several times. I was out there with Ideatech to get internet hooked up to my house. Same dog was out, started growling at us. I called the city police department and all they said was, well, we don't handle that, call 911. It's like, you could, you know who's on duty, call him right now. But no, apparently, it just seems like a waste of resources to be calling 911 for animal control.
I do want to let you know that the reason that we have you guys call 911, then there's a record of that call and that starts due process against that violation or that violator.
Okay.
And to prosecute those cases down the road, we definitely need that record. So that's why we suggest you call 911.
For the time being, though, she could have called the officer and got him down there right away.
It's been policy.
Something could have happened in between me hanging up the phone and then reaching the call.
It's been policy in any situation.
Side of the point, there was another pit bull, a different black one out today, right over by Carl was mowing the yard. I went and talked to him. My other issue is the construction, the four-block intersection there at Walnut and Ninth. I'm glad there's no more potholes and all that, but it's been really slow to get my sprinkler system fixed. Those guys came out, they didn't really have to tear out my sprinkler system to begin with. They did it out of convenience for themselves. They only had to go one foot behind the curb. They wanted to take eighteen inches and so in turn that ripped out my whole zone behind the curb. Took them until a couple of weeks ago to get in, to get the new ones put in. They put it in themselves. Before they ripped it out, they said they were gonna get an irrigation company to reinstall it, but they just installed it themselves. First time I turned it on, blew a leak. Now, they said they'd come back and adjust it. Well, no, they haven't done anything. They're still spraying all out in the road and everything. Two of them don't even spray right. They just hydro seeded before I came up here. They didn't even do that right. You're supposed to spray it from two different angles. And they only just walked along and sprayed it. They missed spots out in my yard that they tore, that the contractor tore up. And I don't think there was even an inspector there to see how much seed was put down, to check if they did it perspex or anything. I think the city's representation on it has been pretty lackluster. Talking to other neighbors, they've called to the city and complained. They've been turned and said, well, you need to call Votz Parga. Well, we shouldn't have to call Votz Parga. Votz Parga's contract is with the city of Halsted, not with us individuals. You're supposed to represent us as a taxpayer and make sure it's done right. So I want that addressed too. I want somebody to get over and fix my sprinklers because they just seeded it. How am I supposed to water it? I mean, it's not working out right.
I trust you're making notes on this.
I don't even know what kind of material they, talking to Carl, they didn't even use the right material to put, to reinstall my sprinkler system and that's why it blew apart already too, so.
What was the first dog that chased you?
I don't know whose it is.
What color?
It's a gray one.
Gray?
With a pink collar, pit bull.
The Clark's dog.
And then the one today was black with an orangish collar. And I don't know whose that is either.
Okay.
But the gray one I see out all the time.
Yeah, it's chased me as well.
I'd say I agree with you.
Yeah, it's just messed up. I gotta feel like I gotta carry a weapon around in Halsted to protect myself and my kids. I mean, I just got back, we went to vacation in Chicago. I felt safer walking around there than I do in Halsted. So. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Who's next? Carl?
Carl Muskemans, 819 Walnut. I just wanted to touch on a couple of points about the dogs. I am a huge dog lover. I'm up and down every street in this town, four or five times every day with my golf cart and my dog. I have felt the exact same thing that most of the residents here has felt from several of these dogs. What I want to stress though is taking measures against just the dog, I feel is wrong. I think the homeowner or the pet owner needs to be held more responsible. If you're gonna have a, an animal, you need to be held responsible for that animal. I know where my dog is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I know for a fact you know where your dog is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. For somebody to get fourteen citations in a short period of time and be able to still have that dog in your possession, I think is wrong. The first time, I agree, something needed to be done. I agree with Bryant's that we, we need to nip it in the bud, but it's not just a dog issue. It is the home or pet owner's responsibility to make sure these dogs ain't getting out. So us people that are out on the street walking, we are able to do without having to carry a gun, a bat, a knife, a chainsaw or what have you. I don't know what the answers are. But I think some of it needs to be addressed with the, the people that own these pets. That's where I stand, especially being a dog lover, so. Take that for what it is.
Okay, thank you, Carl.
I'm out of your way, people, I'm sorry.
Adam Marie, 212 Santa Fe. I was one of the people that were attacked by the white pit bull and bulldog. My kids were out there probably five minutes, ten minutes earlier, so were my neighbors. And I had to look to make sure, because these dogs come running up and all I could do to fight them off was a chainsaw. I know I didn't get to start anything like that. I had to hit these dogs so many times, they would not stop coming at me. Now, it was for like a minute, two minutes, seemed like three hours.
Did you report this incident?
Yes, I have the incident. I went to emergency room, I have paperwork right here.
I don't need to see it, I'm just, want to make sure that you reported it so we have that audit trail.
But the thing is, is after I got attacked, I told everybody is, what if, what if, what if they get out? And they got out again and they hurt one of the sweetest old ladies ever come out of this town. Now, what if my kids get out? What if one of your guys' kids get out? Is that what it's gonna take for a little kid to get mauled by these damn dogs? And I don't think it's right and I think something should be done with it. I mean, I know I was scared. I could imagine what she felt like.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
And I'm a big man. I'm just saying, like, that is just the most messed up stuff. That should never happen. Those dogs should never be coming back to Halsted. And not only should the owners, the home, the guy that owns the house, should never probably let them damn dogs ever in there. But that's all I have right now.
All right, thank you.
I'm new to town. My name is James Terrell. I live at Eight Cedar Drive. I moved in with my wife on the 21st of July, the 29th. The afternoon of, I was putting up a temporary fence for my dogs in the backyard. And out of nowhere, there was two white dogs and then a pit bull mix. I'm assuming they were, they both looked like bulldogs to me. It's quick. I'm a dog person. I've been around big dogs. I've been around pit bulls. They don't scare me usually, but they were on me quick and they were nipping at me. They didn't break through the skin, but they were getting close. Being a dog person, I changed my attitude and was like, hey, come on. And I started being playful with them. And I walked them from Eight Cedar Drive, which is the second house, south of Sixth Street on Cedar Drive, walked them all the way to the street and got them to go across the street. But if it would have been an old lady, my mom, any of my animals, my wife, I don't know if it would have ended the same, so. I also carry protection on the back deck when I'm out there. And we had intended to put in a chain link fence, you know, eventually. It happened a week later because of that, so. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next.
Steve Crable. Wichita. Yeah, yesterday, my mom, you guys know about that. Those guys pretty much stole my thunder. But.
How's your mom doing?
I guess okay. Just kinda traumatized. But food for thought, across the street from her, there's a young family. I think they at least have one real young child. Maybe two. Two houses down, there's another young family. And I know they have at least two real young kids, maybe three. Oh, there's four? Okay, shows you what I know. But those are good people. I don't know what that bunch is, west of my mom. Don't know anything about it. I don't know if it's a single parent household. But I cannot, when I heard how many reports have been on those dogs, boy, that's bad. That's, that's a horrible look for this town. I mean, I grew up in this town. I've always been proud to say I'm from this town, but now man. I'll tell you guys a little story. When I was a kid, we had a real mean dog. It was a German shepherd. Pit bulls weren't in style then. But that dog was real protective. Dad always told me, if she ever bites anybody, she's gonna be shot. Well, one day, I don't know if she bit this fellow, but she knocked him down and he was an old man. And that dog was gone that very day. I don't know why there's so much has, well, I know why. It's because of the almighty dollar. Everybody's afraid of being sued. I know why. But there, maybe there needs to be some changes in the law. Maybe anyone that has a pit bull has to have that dog first, not only register, but be required to have maybe an electric fence. I mean, an invisible fence is what I'm trying to say. And have it wired up in such a way where no dogs can be able to jump through there. In other words, if it tries to get through there, it gets it really gets zapped. Maybe that's one way.
Maybe no pit bulls at all.
Yeah, I, I would prefer that. So, I mean, this town's in danger of being exposed on TV. It's ga, it's gaining traction. Boy, I'd be embarrassed. You know? I'll, I'll stop right there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 121 Chestnut. I'm Matt McKee and family members with the people that have been presenting. I'm looking for clarity. Can you, you guys know the statutes that are being violated? Are there statutes that are being violated? We've got to figure out what they are, you supposedly know those, and find out where we're losing communication or why isn't this happening? Why aren't we following through? I'm really fascinated that we're doing the nine, you know, call 911. I think that's gotta be in the paper as soon as possible. You guys gotta promote why we want you to call, call 911. So that people will do that because that helps the process, right?
Yes.
Right now, they know about a lot of cases I have no clue about and I imagine that's what's happening. All this is happening, but we aren't funneling the information correctly, so. And if it needs to be 911, like you decided, let's get it going. So to me, I'm looking for leadership to step in and not only stop a disaster or something that we can't imagine. But it, it's all gonna be an organization and leadership that makes that happen. I think our policemen's hands are tied and they need support. So, good luck. I hope that process happens. I, I agree with Steve. I don't want to look like a laughing stock and I don't want someone to die or be maimed to make that happen. It's time. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. McKee. Next.
I might add one thing too. I think the city is actually setting themselves up lively for a lawsuit here. If they don't act upon this, you know, Mrs. Crable definitely has a suit. Myself, mine being the first offense, I don't know that I would, but if I'd found out that it had been, that this was a reoccurrence, definitely would be a lawsuit there right now. And it's, you guys are just, you guys need to do something quick because this is not good.
Please come to the podium if you'd like to say anything.
This is gonna be super quick.
Name and address, please.
I'm Pat Lawler. I'm part of the Crable bunch, Derby, Kansas. So that bunch of dogs that got mom last night is also the same dogs that had been in her yard a year ago. And I did try to find animal control and I got the 911 and went through all that. Well, the animals disappeared and so they didn't come, but I called again because they returned that very same day. And so we had a pretty quick response with one of the police officers that came and got them taken in, taken in, but it was two pit bulls at that time and I believe it's the same ones that same dogs. It, they're return, they're returners because they don't live far from my mom's house.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna add something.
Name and address, please.
Shelley Hatton, 417 Santa Fe. Though, there was the Warner, Summer Warner, and her baby was attacked in the stroller. A baby, days old.
Now, that's one I'm not familiar with, but I know Summer.
Days old. Days old. Yeah. Days old.
When was this?
This was, do you remember? So, okay, well, I have it on my phone because she texted me. So what happened was in February, I had gone to her house. I had dropped something off and as I was going to my car, that dog came out of that house, cornered me and I couldn't get in my car. And I started yelling, come get your dog. And I yelled it very loudly and finally the kids came out and took the dog. The dog growled at me, never charged at me. But I got my car. I didn't say anything, but I left. And then when this happened, Summer privately messaged me and, and said, I wondered if you would, had remembered that. And I said, oh, yeah, this all brought it back. I remember everything, but I'm more concerned this dog attacked a child in a stroller. Something has to be done. And school starts Wednesday.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Could I add anything?
Sure. Sure.
Please, please come to the podium.
That, we want that microphone there so it goes out on our TV channel and our Facebook Live.
All right. This should be a zero tolerance thing. There shouldn't be ten chances. It should be zero tolerance, just like I told you about the story. That's why I mentioned that story about my dad. That's really what I wanted to say, except one last little thing. I didn't see my mom getting attacked till it was too late. I had my back to her. Something got my attention. I don't know why, I just glanced. I was getting inside of my truck and I saw she had this look on her face.
And you said you heard a weird sound.
I thought I heard something and I kinda looked and I saw a head jump up and trying to bite her in the face, but he missed. All I could do is scream and holler. And just like he, just like this guy said, man, that was, that was a long minute or whatever it lasted. Especially one of those dogs kept coming. And he'd stop right at the last second because I just, I got a loud voice, doesn't sound like it now, but I have a loud voice. And it'd stop him and he, you know. But besides that.
Well, let's finish the story. After you were yelling and hollering and then the neighbor three doors down.
Jared.
Jared Carmichael.
Oh, yeah.
The whole commotion and he ran up with a stick.
He was, they were, they were walking with sticks.
Mom.
No, I didn't see that part.
Mom got, has three puncture wounds. She's on, she got attended to. Then they went for Steve, the dogs went for Steve and then they went after Jared who had a stick who was trying to get the dogs off, get off. And the dogs went after him. And so we saw his wife or his sister-in-law in the yard this morning. She said the same, like, she was petrified. She's a woman for little, a brand newborn. She said, we were just outside five minutes ago. We were packing, they're getting ready to move. So they were in and out of the house, kids running up and down. So.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the council?
I would.
Okay.
This is my husband. I'm Randy Lynn Drake Bryant. I have two daughters and I've had at least two or three times that I can think of where I was getting in my vehicle and those pit bulls, especially the gray one with the pink collar, would come up on me and my daughters and basically the only thing I knew how to do, because unfortunately I didn't have my bat on me, was to stand in front of my kids and be big. Luckily, the dog didn't come after us, but my daughter's an animal lover. My younger one is. She's nine years old. Is that what it's gonna take for a kid to get mauled or hurt? I mean, like, when somebody told me there'd been fourteen citations about these dogs or dogs like them, that's insane. Like, is that the idea is that we're gonna have to wait till it personally affects you to do something?
No, and, and I.
No, let me finish.
Go ahead.
That's not right. We've been in this town forever. You know, that was my, that's my father-in-law. He got mauled by three dogs. That's a ninety-two-year-old lady. That's insane. The fact we're even discussing this is kind of insane to me. Like, this is supposed to be a safe, small town. He has kids in this town my age. I, I don't know about you, Mr. Travis, if you have children.
I've got two grandsons that come here frequently.
And yeah, and could you imagine if one of those dogs came after yours? I mean, that's what frightens me to death. Like, I'm actually gonna step out of this meeting right now and call my daughter because she is with my other daughter riding their bikes, just to make sure that they're okay. And if they don't answer, then I'm gonna be going down to the park and searching for my kids because that's, I had a dream last night that they got attacked. Like, I know it was just a dream, but still, I shouldn't have to worry about that. I shouldn't have to think about having a bat on me in order to defend ourselves. Like, that's crazy. Like, I, I just, this is supposed to be a town about family and community and it needs to be resolved immediately and I love all animals, but if it's a pit bull and that's the breed that keeps doing this kind of stuff, then maybe there needs to be a law that says they can't be in town. I don't know if that's possible and I know other people feel differently about their pit bulls. But if this has happened so many times in our town, maybe we need to do something about it and I want to protect the kids. Like, that's who I really, and that poor old lady who I've never met, I couldn't imagine if something like that happened to like my grandparent or something. I'm seriously mad about what happened to Bud. Like, I was fuming really mad. Like, my husband doesn't even want me up here talking. He like asked me not to talk because I get really upset, but these are kids and elderly person. And I want to feel okay with them going across the city to go to the park and play and right now I don't feel okay. Like, I literally am gonna leave and go call my daughter just to make sure that she's okay. That's all I have to say and thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Again, Carl Muskemans. I, I've heard pit bull thrown out several times and I don't want to ruffle any feathers. My dogs, my past three dogs have been park pit bull. And pit bulls have a notorious or a bad name for whatever reasons. A dog typically acts the way they're trained. And my pit bull, the three I've had have been the most loving, caring, giving dogs that, that I've ever had, even over a little wiener dog like yours. My, my big dogs wouldn't hurt a flea. Yes, I know we've had some bad pit bulls in town that have unfortunately hurt innocent people. I wish you guys would consider a little bit of maybe about the, the dog breed. Because I can't say that pit bulls are just the, the bad dogs because that, that's not necessarily true. And again, I go back to the dog owners, how they're raising these animals and etc. And my heart goes out to all these people that have had very bad experiences over, over the past month with, with certain dogs, but.
It's not, I don't, to me, it's not about the pit bull. It's about the amount of damage a pit bull can do compared to a smaller dog. That is the issue.
I, I get that and I understand that. But I also want you guys to consider that it's not just the pit bull breed. Again, some of that goes back to, because German shepherds as well, they can
Yeah.
They can do some.
It's one of the packs that's happened to shepherd mix in there and it also has a English bull or a bulldog. Maybe have English. I don't know, my.
Yeah, English bulldog.
But it's a big.
That's the one that bit me.
Big.
So I don't want to add salt to the wound. I just, I, I need to stand up for, for the breed a little bit. I'll shut my mouth now.
Thank you, Carl.
Thanks.
One more?
Go ahead.
So. Now, the person that owns these dogs, if these dogs get euthanized, are they gonna be allowed just to have more dogs and have, you know? That's, that's a big question.
It's a good idea.
That's probably a question that Brad may be able to answer. I don't think that there's anything in place to prevent it. Is there, Brad?
The way we enforce it, there is. If, if it's a vicious animal and there's any kind of physical attack and injury of any sort, the general standard is that that's. physical attack and injury of any sort, the general standard is that that's it. If they're convicted, if the owner has convicted the dog, there's two choices. You can take them to a shelter, rehome them with some assurance that they can't be anywhere nearby, like they're at a farm right outside of town, and they end up back in town anyway. So, we, we don't necessarily always put them down. When I first started doing this many years ago, that's what we did. You'd hold them for three days because of the, the concern about whether they'd been properly vaccinated or not, check to see if they showed any signs of rabid behavior, and then we'd put them down. A lot of the time now, the theory is, well, it's many times it's the owner, not the dog, although it can be both. And so, what we try to do, these no-kill shelters or some other location, they're given seven days to, they're held generally, but they're given a certain amount of time to go find a place for them, and then there's an assurance provided that this is where the dog went, and we double-check that. And then, they're on probation for a twelve-month period of time with the prohibition that they have any, actually, if it's happened with enough severity, no animals, cats, dogs, anything, but. Yeah, and that's, that's unfortunate if we're getting, and people will do that. I mean, they'll sneak them in, they'll hold them.
So, you're saying-
I know, I know they weren't, they still had everything so they could still reproduce, so, I mean, like.
Yeah, that's not, that's not the intent when we have one that's attacked someone.
Yeah, that's all I needed to know.
Ma'am?
Real quick. Chief Orem this morning told me that there are twenty-nine charges against the group of dogs, the three that attacked my mom yesterday. Twenty-nine.
Citations or charges?
He, he called it charges. Maybe he didn't mean charges. That's just the word he used. Calls? I don't know. He said charges.
And I believe those are across two separate incidents.
It may be.
And-
That's just a lot.
They have not been to court for the first set, unfortunately.
Same dog, same owners. And every time I've seen those dogs running, and my brother has witnessed the same thing, there's always a little girl running out. It's like a child. It's like the parents are absent. Or they don't care, or they're irresponsible, and they put these, this little girl, and sometimes a little boy. Sometimes a little boy. That, that comes and like, you know, tries to say, "Come on," whatever, Rover or Trixie or whatever, "Let's go home." And then, you know, like, the time that the dogs came upon my brother, or they ran through.
They ran through.
And, but they didn't touch it. They didn't confront him, but the kids then came up, no adults again, and they're like, "Have you seen some dogs?" And he's like, "Yeah, I did, actually. I saw them, you know, they're over there," or whatever. And he said, "Why? Are they mean?" And the older boy says, "No," and the little girl says, "Yes." So, it's like the children are almost trained, and the little girl, maybe being younger and not knowing how to answer. She answered truthfully, and the boy that's a little older may have said what maybe his parents trained him to say, like, just tell them they're not mean, or they're not gonna, you know. But obviously, we have all heard the stories and witnessed, or, you know, we, we know that.
I've heard the boy has, has hit the dogs too. So, the dog was helping to be mean.
So, anyway, I don't know. Twenty-nine calls on the same animals. It's sad for the animals, but it's also sad for everybody that is living in fear.
Thank you again. Does anybody else have anything additional they'd like to add this evening?
You know, we've talked about the dogs, but we haven't talked about the owners and what kind of owners they are. I will. Oh, Roberta Crable, Wichita. And, um, you know, one time is one too many for that to happen, and if there's twenty-nine complaints about these dogs, why, why aren't the owners have huge fines on them? Besides the citations, why isn't, why hasn't someone sued? Because, you know, that's a high possibility. My mother-in-law got bit. The dogs don't have rabies vaccines, so now we have to worry about what's gonna happen.
Ethan, what is the timeline across these two different incidents? No, from, from the time we had our first set of charges versus this most recent.
Within a week.
Because there was like fourteen citations issued the first time, and another group of citations issued the second time, and they have still not been to court for the first time because of the way our court dates fall. And that's very unfortunate.
I think what they're saying is, the dog needs to be locked up until they go to court.
The dogs are locked up right now.
Yes. Well, they should have been locked up after-
That's right. That's why I said one is too many. But, you know, if the dogs don't have vaccines, if the owners can't afford to vaccinate their dogs, they shouldn't have dogs.
I don't disagree with you.
How do, how do they feed them? They've got three dogs. You know, it should not be allowed to happen. I worked for a veterinarian in Wichita, Kansas. Every year, when the vaccines came up, we sent out notifications. If they didn't bring the dogs in, we called them two or three times to find out why they hadn't brought the dog in to get vaccinated. We held clinics once a month. People that couldn't afford to pay twenty-five dollars could pay eight bucks.
Do you hold a clinic here in town?
You know, I mean, I-
How does a dog get out of carrying hands, community, back into Halsted without being up to down on the vaccines? If that's the story, if that's true.
Yeah, I, I have the same question.
Carrying hands, carrying hands didn't know, I don't think.
That's part of registering, you know. Like, when our dogs would come into the clinic, we had to send stuff to the city so that they knew those dogs were vaccinated. I mean, that was just a given. You could not get any way around that. I mean, there has to be something here in Halsted that somebody is watching, the vet who takes care of them or whoever, because they have to be registered here.
Do not disagree with you. Uh, at the end of the day, there are most of us that are responsible pet owners, but unfortunately, there are those of us that are unresponsible pet owners.
What about a leash law?
We do have a leash law for dogs.
You know, that's-
In fact, we don't have a leash law for cats, and I think it's unfair. I think cats should be on leash.
City of Wichita has one for cats. Your cat, if your cat is out, it has to be on a leash.
In Wichita?
Yes.
But this isn't Wichita.
Well, I know. But it should be better, considering how big Wichita is. So I just think the dog owners need to be held to a higher standard.
I agree, and thank you for weighing in.
I have one more for you.
Okay, bud.
The state statute says that years after one incident, they're supposed to be registered as a dangerous slash vicious animal. And that way, any, one more time, they're done, they're euthanized. And that's the way the state is, and it should be that way here. At a minimum. Well-
There's several cities that, it's a long time deal. If they draw blood, they're dead. And they definitely drew blood on Mrs. Crable and myself.
Anybody else? I appreciate you guys. Okay.
Before we shut down, I'd like to say that I am not unsympathetic. I have two very close family members that were also viciously attacked by dogs, and so, I'm not unsympathetic with you. So I'm right there.
And probably most of you people in the audience know I have a little red dog that rides around on my golf cart all the time with me, and if something happened to her, I would be devastated. We've heard your comments. We are trying to address this in the best possible manner. This council will continue to deliberate on this issue to come to a solution. Unfortunately, right now, I believe we have a case of a couple of unresponsible pet owners that have caused ninety-five percent of these problems. And those people, because people are people, are allowed due process, and we're in the middle of that right now, and we're going through that, and we're gonna have to give them due process. But bear with us, uh, we'll get through this, and I appreciate you all bringing your comments. And, and I agree with you, bud, uh, especially in a vicious attack. So if there's- Right. If there's something that we can adjust in our ordinance that does that, then we need to look at that. So, thank you guys all for bringing it to our attention. Most of us were very well aware of it anyway, but thanks for coming in tonight. If nobody else needs to speak, we're gonna continue on our, our business agenda tonight, so I can get home at some point. Thank you all. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public forum and go on to ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after having reviewed this consent agenda as submitted, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Consent agenda stands as approved. Next, under unfinished business, we have, uh, ordinance number thirteen thirty, code enforcement updates. You wanna update us, Brad or Ethan?
Turn it over to Mr. Jantsch.
Yeah, we'll let Brad talk tonight.
Thirteen thirty, uh, at this point, and I think it will end up being a sequence of, of ordinances, just for simplicity's sake, covers Article Two of Chapter Eight, which are generically labeled as health nuisances. Each one of these two, two A, three and four, um, under, uh, Chapter Eight, deal with some element of nuisance, whether it's weeds, junk vehicles, debris, or what we've called a, uh, an environmental code that kind of is a catch-all as well. They follow, uh, Chapter Twelve in the state statutes, and that's where it becomes a little complex. There's a, uh, Statute sixteen, seventeen, E and F, that a lot of what we currently have is verbatim modeled after. In order to provide for due process to someone who has these kinds of issues and may not want us, for example, to come in there and load up their entire yard and take it to, you know, the transfer station, they have memorialized the ability for it to come before you. That creates an incredibly slow process, not because you guys are necessarily that deliberative or having to spend that much time on it, but initially, someone, whether it's an environmental control officer, or in our case, the, uh, the police department, notices a, a problem, and even that, the way it's written currently is a problem. We're to have two citizens sign a written complaint, uh, in order for us to initiate these. We see them long before two citizens, in a lot of cases, will do that. So that's when it came to me and said, "How do we speed this up?" Because you'd go through that process, then they'd get ten days, and they'd come in and ask for ten more, and ten more, and ten more. "Well, my truck's broken down. I don't have the money. Uh, I am disabled." Um, you, you name it, and they're all plausible excuses. But we just, it just takes forever. So the thought was that streamline this as much as we can without getting rid of, um, due process for the individuals, because they do have a right to be heard on certain things. There are instances where it looks like junk, but it's only there for a very limited period of time. They're remodeling a back porch, and they've got stuff laying there in some of the debris. They don't have anybody to haul it off, that kind of thing. It can happen. Dealt with it for many years, so what we, what I tried to do is strike a balance here, and I highlighted the sections in this that have absolutely changed, and these are fairly consistent in all four of those articles. I, I did this first one so we wouldn't be swimming through all of those, because they'll look very similar, um, but I wanted you to understand what they were. What we've done is designated, instead of, uh, the governing body, in the, in the statute, it says governing body or other designated agency. I'm treating that as the police department, or through the city manager, a public officer, environmental officer, if, if we choose, and we've been through that process, have someone whose sole function is to go out and do those kinds of things. I've completely eliminated, um, no, that's not true. Uh, yes, I have to. I've completely eliminated the requirement for two people to sign off to start this process. Two people can come in and, and complain, and that's why I kept going back and forth, uh, as can, uh, the, uh, the Board of Health, if, if we have anybody convened for that purpose, or our health officer, or the fire chief, or the police chief, um, themselves, if they notice something. If a city employee, one of the public works guys sees a really, really bad situation somewhere as they're repairing lines or infrastructure in town, they can report it. The way it's set up now, all of those sources are sufficient, and we don't require that it be corroborated by a second person. We do require that the designated agency, in this case, the police department, does corroborate it in some fashion. Goes out, lays eyes on it, so these people aren't feeling like, "Oh, well, somebody just saw something one day. I took care of it, and now they're still back at my house." So I'm trying to give as much in the way of protection for that as possible while still streamlining this. If law enforcement, for example, sees this kind of an issue, they can prepare a simple order, and it's different than this, our, our notice to appear citation, like you would see typically with a traffic ticket or a long-form complaint. And I've got a, a form for that, if, if we still don't have one of the old ones around that we used years ago, that specifies what's wrong and why. Which of these chapter, or these articles it falls under, and specifically, here's a kind of a general list of what we see as a problem, so you at least know, this is what we think you need to address. The individual, at that point, has the ability to come to law enforcement and ask for greater explanation if they want, or simply say, "I contest that." The officer is then going to just, we're gonna skip this whole, um, governing body, uh, thing, and the officer will then just write the citation to appear in municipal court. You take your case before a judge, so you still haven't lost due process, but you're not running it through the administrative body, meaning the governing body. We're not taking up your time with it. We're not taking that extra two or three months that that usually would take to do this. We're trying to set it up, get it fixed. If it is fixed in that ten days, no harm, no foul, there's nothing else required, no other expense. If they don't get it fixed, it goes before a judge, and basically, I'm prosecuting it with the, with law enforcement's help, and the judge makes the determination. Then, uh, the rest of it still flows the way it used to, again, still taking the governing body out of it. What we're doing at that point is, if the judge makes a determination, this really is a nuisance, and if we find that you are guilty of that, there's a set fine, uh, and it's a daily fine, if he wishes to assess that, and he has the power. It says, I made it say "may," not "shall," assess the costs of cleanup against the individual, because again, you give some flexibility there, because you don't, if there's some inability to clean it up, taking someone who's living on a fixed income, who's disabled, has no ability to really get it cleaned up the way it should be, we do that. We can assess it against the real estate, as we do with weed notices and mowing and that kind of thing, but we're not necessarily assessing it if the judge finds there's a good faith reason not to do so. I have left that flexibility in it. But I, I did set parameters in each and every one of these, minimum fines depending upon what the problem is. For straight health nuisances like these, those are usually pretty significant, so it's a two-hundred-dollar minimum fine. That's what it's gonna take, plus court costs, and it can go up from there, and it's daily, uh, if he chooses to assess that, um, on a daily basis after the adjudication of guilt. Each of the four sections, weeds are a little different. Junk vehicles are a little different, because we're towing things away, or we're mowing something, as opposed to the, like, this one is usually the biggest one. Got a bunch of junk all over your yard. We have to get in there with a high loader and a dump truck and get all that stuff out of there. The cost is gonna be pretty dramatic. So the fine on this one is the highest of any of them, at a minimum. But it does set a minimum, thou shalt, you know, assess this amount to somebody. Whether, and we don't have a waivable portion to that. I did not, uh, leave it quite that open to the judge's discretion as we have historically, because sometimes we just get nowhere. In doing that, I'll be candid, because they're like, "Oh, I feel bad for him, so I'm not gonna assess anything." Well, we, then there, we clean it up, and it's the same way two months later. So we're trying to, to do some type of an object lesson. But what I wanted to stress in terms of, of this with the highlighted sections is that we have taken you guys out of it completely. You're the elected officials. If you want to be in this in some way, I need to know that, because I can reinsert elements of that, and that is what the state statute contemplates. That it would come before you, and you would pass a resolution, and that resolution then is served upon them, and, you know, if you start counting up the days, it's at least two months' worth of administrative function before we get anywhere.
Well, you set this up to be, um, executed the most expeditious manner. So that's what, that's what we want.
Yeah, and, and as long, I just wanted to be sure of that, because this one is ready to go. And, uh, and as long, I just wanted to be sure of that, because this one is ready to go. The others are all drafted. It's a matter, I, I wanted to make sure we were on the same page about that, and I know the instruction had been, we'd like to stay out of this, but this takes you out of it completely. There's no more, oh, well, we wanna be in, involved, uh, very much like tonight, if you get a crowd of people. We'd have to rewrite them once you pass these to put you back in, uh, because you are not in this, in any way, shape or form anymore.
We wanna put all the onus on our city manager. We'll address him if he's not keeping us happy.
So, that, any questions about that? I just wanted to be sure it was clear as to what we were doing.
I don't so much have a question, just more of a general comment, and I, I suspect I'm in the minority on this one. My preference would be to leave the police out of this issue completely. I, I would strongly favor having an appointed public officer that is not the police department, and reserve the police's function to enforce criminal law, to go out and, you know, take care of the batteries and the domestics and then traffic and the stuff that they're, that they should do. And to leave this for some other function, environmental officer, whatever you call it. Like I said, that's my preference on this, and, and I feel pretty strongly about that one, but.
Well, we don't have an environment, well, that would probably, I don't know, may probably be, Ethan would have to be driving around doing this. And he's, you've seen his desk?
I know.
And I, he doesn't have the time to do this. In my opinion, the police officers that are out there daily, they see this daily.
And the way, the way Brad has written this, correct me if I'm wrong, if we do down the road hire a person for that position, then it reverts back to them.
And, and because of the, the way you are now set up with the city manager function, he has the ability to create that position, fund it, and hire them. And I did memorialize that in each of these, uh, articles. So if you wanna move to that, you do, we wouldn't have to change anything for that to occur. And you're right, it does, there are a number of cities that do that, uh, and heck, they even have a separate hearing officer instead of the local municipal judge. I've served in that role in a number of cities before. So you're environmental hearing officer, and you get to order a house torn down or different kinds of things, so you make yourself really popular with certain people. That, that is another function.
Hypothetically, I'm just thinking, outside the box, could we have a, a environmental officer slash dog enforcement?
It's a very common combination, if you find somebody who really wants to do that. Neither of them are favorite people around town. Many times, they'll try to find somebody who doesn't even live in town to do it, because they get harassed a bunch. Especially on these environmental issues. You, you're saying my house is a piece of junk? That usually sets somebody off in a lot of cases, but. But yes, that's, those are the two. It's hard to get, uh, full-time in a city this size for either of those, but I've seen them put them together.
Any other questions regarding this council?
So with that, Mr. Mayor, I make motion, motion to table a final consideration of the ordinance until August twenty eighth, uh, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Have a motion and a second to table this until the next meeting. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. That will be tabled and be under, uh.
For clarification, do you, you want the city attorney to bring back the other section ordinances for next time too?
Are we clear on that?
Yep. Also, two A, three and four is what you'll get. There's those articles.
All right, well, that takes care of unfinished business. We'll move to new business. And Carrie's been patiently waiting back there. We have the KLCH funding requests, so. Tell us, tell us what we're helping with this time.
All right. Hi, I'm Carrie Herman. I'm the executive director at the Kansas Learning Center for Health. First, I'd like to say thank you for all of your past support. I know several of you came to our, um, ribbon cutting on Friday for outdoor fitness equipment, and we can't do that without partnerships like you. Um, and even some of the city workers that helped us with some different projects while we were doing it. So we really appreciate all you do to help support us. I did put together some information for your packet, so you could kind of see what we were looking at for a ten thousand dollar request. The first thing has to do with our exterior signage. We had received, um, some grant funds through the Dragon Grant a while back of thirty-six hundred dollars, but the pricing for signage has gone up a lot, um, almost doubled, quadrupled from some companies. We've been trying to find other companies that we can do something that's reasonable, but we still need more than the initial thirty-six hundred, so we are gonna have part of it go towards that. We also received a grant through AARP, um, and it is to install eight benches on our property, along with some bench swings in our garden. And I've had three different contractors out to give us cost on the concrete and installation. We have the brick pavers, the memorial bricks, and the, um, the, in honor of bricks that we have been selling to raise money. We'd like to go ahead and install all of that at the same time in our garden, so the swings would have, be on a bigger concrete slab with the bricks in the middle. Makes more sense to do all of that at the same time versus having them come out at a later date, so we don't have quite enough to do all of that. So some of the money would go to help with that project, and then the remainder of it would help us with the basketball slab. Um, over the years, we've had different people come out and give us pricing on trying to make it safer. It is a really old slab of concrete, and we would like to have the three raised edges removed off of it to help make it a little safer. We can't afford to replace it. Um, it's like forty thousand dollars. So if we can make it safer, um, we would like to do that, so part of the funds would go to help towards that. So I don't know if you have any questions, but I did also include in your packet pictures of the artwork that we're looking at for the front of the building. And then this is a map that shows where the benches are gonna go on our campus, um, along with the garden area with the swings and the bricks.
Regarding the slab and the curbs that are on three sides, have you been in touch with a contractor who does that sort of work?
Yeah, I've actually, I've talked with, um, Votz Parga. I've talked with, um, Becker, Wally Becker, and then, uh, company No Block Construction out of Wichita. And, and Wally Becker told me that we might have to do some repair work when we go to remove it, but it is a raised lip. At one point, there was rebar sticking out, and we had that cut off. But we, as many people that use it, we wanna make it safe, and right now, we just don't feel like it's.
Is there electricity or power out there at the slabs?
Not that I'm aware of. We have power at the pavilion. We did have electrical ran to the pavilion.
Well, it all looks really pretty exciting, and I just, I live just down the street, about a, a block, and it just neat to see all this stuff continually happening down there. There's just this metamorphosis of the facility, and it just, it's pretty cool.
Thank you.
So if there's no, you have something to say, Derek?
No.
Okay. Um, with that, I make a motion to approve the annual donation to the Kansas Learning Center for Health in the amount of not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, annual donation to KLCH. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. That carries. I have one question. When are you drawing for the golf cart?
On Saturday at our gala, at nine o'clock, and if the persons aren't present, we will call them. So, thank you all very much.
I might have a couple of tickets in that hat.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Next, uh, oh, one of our favorite subjects. Natural gas firm transport agreement. I imagine this is something we are renewing annually now with Southern Star.
That is correct. Um, guys, it's the agenda memo, and for, I think all of you saw this last year, um, basically. One of the changes post-Winter Storm Yuri, um, is that need to, or I guess, very strong suggestion to secure, uh, what's considered firm transport. That way, if and when there's operational flow orders on pipelines, you're entitled to a, uh, amount as contracted of gas. Again, that, that daily volume is based on, um, historical monthly volumes, uh, full disclosure. I mean, we, we pay the tariff on all that. So if it's a really warm winter, that means we're actually paying for gas that's probably not getting used, but in the event you have the alternate happen, you at least have firm supply coming into the city, and they can't just say, you know, there is no gas for the city of Halsted, because you're not a customer of ours. So, um, this basically protects us for, uh, the winter months, and then the shoulder months, which would be November and March, uh, where sometimes it's cold, sometimes it's not as cold, so.
Do we have any way of storing excess?
No, we have no storage capacity.
Actually, after Winter Storm Yuri, looked deeply into storage of LNG with the vaporization plant and everything else, and it wasn't cost-effective for us to do it.
I'm looking at the fiscal impact funding source.
Yeah.
I just wanna be clear, um, the estimate cost based on a three-year average. So this three year, it's over a three-year average, but annually, of those three years, you're looking at about thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, I wanna be clear on that.
Yep, yep, and to put that in perspective, like, you know, our gas budget is one point nine million for twenty twenty-three.
I just wanna be clear on that.
Yep.
If, um, there's more questions or discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve authorization of the mayor's signature on the transportation service agreement with the Kansas Municipal Gas Agency and Southern Star Central Gas Pipeline.
Have a motion and a second to accept this, uh, natural gas firm transport, transport agreement. All in favor, say aye. Same sign. That stands as passed. Next up, this will be a fun project for us, design-build RFP for the Halsted Industrial Park spec building.
In your packet, uh, is a draft RFP, uh, for a design-build project, uh, for the industrial park building that we are awarded base two-point-oh grant funding for. Again, I guess just so, uh, the public is aware that was a grant, we received a hundred and forty-four thousand. The rest of the cost of the project will be, um, on the city. Uh, we estimate, based on pricing, you know, somewhere around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand uh, for the size of square foot building we're looking to, uh, put into the industrial park, which would be roughly thirty-five hundred. Anyway, we would issue this RFP starting tomorrow. Uh, you have the timeline in there, have you all serving. Feel this will be a pretty simple project, so don't need to have like a separate subcommittee. We can just bring qualified responses to you all to talk. Leaves the option in there, if you guys wanna, um, review or interview, um, any respondents. Uh, we have timelines in there, and then eventual selection. Also, just so you all know, we do allow any part of the work to be subcontracted under the RFP, so a construction company could bid, and then subcontract, say, the design work. But what we're looking for is basically, you know, we have some general parameters as far as ceiling height we want, um, square footage we're looking for. We want some amenities in there, like an office, um, obviously for a business, but other than this, our hope is to get a streamlined, um, project. Uh, our other alternative would be a, um, since it is a state award and subject not only to our own s, policy purchasing, but the states would be, you would do a separate RFP process for the design preliminary engineering. Then, once you get all that done, you would go and try and find your contractor, and so you'd have two RFP processes. Takes a little bit longer. So, and we would really like to see a building get it up and out there as quick as possible, so that's why we're suggesting it, but open if there's anything in the, the RFP that you guys want changed or.
So we're.
Bestifications.
This structure, you're looking at something that would have offices, uh, a, a basic office, uh, bathroom facilities.
Yeah.
Heating and air, and the balance of it would be tenant improvement.
Yep.
Yeah, and we'll do the heating and air over the, uh, office occupied areas and the bathrooms. Uh, the rest of it's gonna be general warehousing space, which will provide lighting and standard outlets in. What you brings to mind, another question, Ethan, have you talked to, uh, Evergy about getting that third leg, so we could have three-phase available over there?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the radar, and once we get this, we'll re, restart that and figure out exactly what we need to do, and there might be some cost to the city.
And the reason I'm concerned about that is if we had a machine shop moving to town that wanted to utilize that building, they're gonna need three-phase power there. So we're gonna have to get that down that side.
I need to request that ASAP, because I think they're backed up.
Are we, are, on the, um, specs, are we, um, specking like steel frame, steel structure?
I think we, yeah, we did steel building with minimum fourteen and, or fourteen foot, excuse me, fourteen foot sidewalls, and then appropriate insulation.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But we can, I say, we can leave it open. I mean, that's, yeah, why we want the feedback of the council, if you want it, steel frame too, we can add that.
Right.
Yeah, steel frame, steel building, I think's the way to go, which is gotta be your typical industrial building.
Right.
Yeah.
It would be, if there was any additions, renovations, it makes it a lot easier to, to blend it and keep moving. Okay. Once again, if there's no more discussion or questions, uh, I would make a motion to approve and authorize advancement, uh, for the request for proposals to Halsted Industrial Park Specula Building Design Build Services.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to issue this RFP for our industrial park building. All in favor, say aye. Same sign. That motion carries. Next up is MOU with two-oh-eight Maine LLC.
Uh, thank you. This is just a simple MOU, um, that just clarifies kind of the relationship between us and two-oh-eight Maine LLC. Um, as you all remember, uh, Taz Winling came in here as the owner of two-oh-eight Ma, Maine LLC to do a, um, heel grant, uh, historic economic asset lifeline, uh, for work she's doing on the two-oh-four Maine property that is adjacent, uh, to the Daphne May Cafe there. This pretty much mirrors all the requirements that are in the state documentation we've all signed. Construction actually, for her project, um, should start here very shortly, um, based on the last communication I had with her. And we have received that first half of funds, and that was in the bills and payroll tonight, so it's just, would be a simple MOU we would ask for approval for to solidify and, and outline that relationship.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the memorandum of understanding subject to any revision by the city attorney or staff between the city of Halsted and two-oh-eight Maine LLC regarding the historic economic suspended lifeline grant and authorization for the city manager to sign the documents on behalf of the city.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the MOU with two-oh-eight Maine LLC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. That carries. Next, we have, uh, street closure and special event application. Is this Brick Street stuff?
No, this is actually, um, one of the things that kind of came up, um, recently was, you know, whether our downtown businesses were adequately informed of upcoming closures, or when those requests had been made of the city. Talking to some other cities about how they handle this. A lot of them have gone to formal applications. We also took what some of the other cities do, which is, um, to give you all the peace of mind as the governing body, although again, uh, I mean, statutorily, the police chief, you all have the right to close streets. This makes any group that would be coming in actually talk to the business owners, get signatures, very similar to how we make people who have chickens get their neighbor's permission of, um, from a policy direction. I guess we give you all to know that, be it Brick Streets, old settlers, whomever, they've gone, done their due diligence, said, this is our plan. For us, the application also spells out some other things that we often sometimes get hit for after the fact, like, are they gonna need restrooms for this event? To make sure that we get those ordered. Again, we understand that a lot of this is, um, you know, nonprofit groups in our community, they're doing great events that bring foot traffic to Halsted, um, so we're not, you know. We had to remove a lot of fee language, if you will, from some of the documents we were looking at, so we're not looking to make people pay a fee for this request, et cetera. Just kind of, please fill out this paperwork. It helps us also then be able to make sure that what's asked for, when they come and present to you all, is what they indicated as far as street closures and the needs of this, and we made it open enough that, say, you had a neighborhood that wanted to do a block party, they could come in and it could be used for basically any event where someone's asking the city to, you know, somehow alter the flow of traffic.
As I was reading through this, I'm reading through, I think, there's gotta be more, there's gotta be something added to this. There's gotta, I got to the very end in the last three sentences, about the fifty-one percent of the street approving this. I thought, yes, it's on there. But, uh, council, you had a chance to look at this also? Okay. And you just need our consensus at this point?
Yeah, we were just looking for thoughts or opinions. I mean, this is would.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, it could give us some clarity down the road.
Yeah, I agree. I think this resolves a lot of problems that we've seen recently.
Helps get the word out, too.
Yeah, speaking of activities and things that happen in town, I understand that the barnsill is planning on coming back. Have they approached us?
Uh, not yet. We're, I'm working with Grant, we're, reach out to Ms. Hastings and make sure that that actually is the plan, and that we have all that appropriate paperwork put together.
Because I, I, I had heard that's what their plan was, and I'm like, well, that's funny, I don't think we've been approached yet.
Yeah, I think we tentatively said, you know, overall, we thought it was a good event, you know, brought, brought people to Halsted. Um, at the, originally, I don't know that they had decided for sure, like, the exact date.
I think what's hers, the first weekend in October on Brick Streets is the second, so this year, they won't be on the same weekend.
So, and their intent as far as the last conversations I had with Ms. Hastings, which are. which are dated a little bit, but was to be back in Riverside Park kind of exclusively.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good. Well, next are one of our favorite things to do. Let's set a city council work session. Final budget approval?
Yep, this is just the final, um, everything across the budget for you all. Because at the next, the August twenty-eighth meeting is when you will actually give approval for that budget summary, which again, beyond the revenue neutral rate, the budget summary and the budget hearing notice will set that ceiling of what the city can go up to in terms of a budget. So, we'll just present final budget recommendations and see if you guys want to make any changes.
When would you like to do this?
Oh, sorry, and preference would be sometime the week of the twenty-first.
Well, definitely not Thursday and Friday for me.
Twenty-first or twenty-second would be best for me.
I'm good up till Wednesday night.
I'll just have to make it work.
So, you got something on every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make it work.
Okay.
Monday would be good.
Monday would be better for you?
Probably.
Monday work for you, Denise?
We have, uh, we have a planning meeting on Monday.
Okay.
Okay. How about Tuesday?
Twenty-second?
I say, if we went early Monday, we'd either have to go early or late.
Well, we squeeze you too much. Would Tuesday be okay with everybody? Okay, let's do Tuesday.
What time?
Six, two, six o'clock Tuesday? Or?
Six-thirty?
Six-thirty?
Really, you want email and reminder, right? Thank you.
Six or six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to have a city council work session Tuesday, August twenty-second, six-thirty PM.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to set a work session, like Brody made in his motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. All right, that work session is set. We do have one executive session on the agenda for this evening, and I would entertain the motion to do that now.
Mr. Mayor, we have that the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss performance of an employee and maintain privacy rights of the individual pursuant to personnel matters of non-elected personnel, exception KSA seven-five four-three-one-nine-B-one. And ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session. The city manager and city attorney, the open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chambers date thirty PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We are in executive session.
Brody was not here.
Yeah, you were here.
Okay, is there any action to be taken? We're, we're back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement for the council, I believe we have decided that we need a second executive session. I would entertain that motion now.
Mr. Ray, I move that the Hallstead City Council recess into executive session to discuss purchase of a property within city limits pursuant to the preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property, exception KSA seven five four three one nine B six, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chambers at eight forty P M.
Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, we are in executive session. We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we'll conclude that portion of our agenda and move on to the report section of the agenda. And we'll start with governing body comments, and tonight I'll start with you, Brody.
Want to extend a big thank you to all the old settlers committee for all the work that they've put in. Fantastic weekend, it looked like we had a great turnout. And, and it looked like everyone was having a good time out there, so a huge word of appreciation for them. Then also, you know, school's starting this week, wish all the students and teachers a good school year.
Okay, Denise?
Piggyback onto what Brody said, it was a great weekend. Thank you to everybody who was involved and all of the, the sponsors and the volunteers. It was a great weekend, we had a good time. And again, you know, school's starting up, so remember as you go to work, you're gonna have little ones crossing streets and those kinds of things, so just be hyper aware that we've got some more traffic, whether it be vehicles or kids walking to school.
Thank you, George.
Once again, thank you for all the hard work from everybody on the old settlers committee and all the cooperation from the other businesses and the well behaved citizens this weekend, for the most part, thank you, it was a great weekend.
I don't think, thank you.
No.
Well, the only thing I'd like to say is why couldn't the weather that we had today been all weekend?
Oh, it was gorgeous.
That would've been nice, I'm, I'm sure I'm getting the blame for that.
Yeah, don't you know that the mayor's supposed to order that?
That was Bill's deal, not mine. So I do have a proclamation this evening in honor of National Health Center Week, and Julie's found me a, a novel, so bear with me.
Thank council member Flavin for that, he sent it to me.
You're welcome. I will keep that in mind. So National Health Center Week Proclamation twenty twenty-three, community health centers roadmap to a stronger America. Whereas for over fifty years, community health centers have provided high quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary and preventative healthcare in our nation's medically underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. Whereas the country's largest primary care network, community health centers, are the healthcare home for over thirty million Americans in over fourteen thousand communities across the nation. One in every eleven people in the United States gets their care at a community health center. Whereas community health centers are a critical element of the health system, serving rural, suburban, frontier and urban populations, and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities. Nationwide, community health centers serve one in every five residents of rural areas. Whereas community health centers serve as beacons of essential resources and support in the face of disasters, pandemics, and will continue to respond quickly to care for America's most vulnerable and underserved communities. Community health centers have administered over twenty-two million COVID nineteen tests and over twenty-four million vaccines to date. Whereas every day, community health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their communities. Health centers have more than doubled their behavioral health workforce in the last decade to meet America's growing need for behavioral health services. Whereas community health centers are governed by patient majority boards, ensuring that patients are engaged in their own healthcare decisions. Whereas community health centers are locally owned and operated, small businesses that serve as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating eighty-five billion in economic activity and more than thirty-seven billion in labor income in some of the country's most economically distressed communities. Whereas community health centers nationally support more than five hundred thousand direct and indirect jobs, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, licensed family therapists and certified nurse midwives who work as a part of multi-disciplinary clinical teams designed to treat the whole patient. Whereas the community health center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income and insurance status, improving health outcomes and reducing healthcare system costs. Whereas community health centers reduce overall costs of care by helping manage patients' chronic conditions, which keeps them out of more expensive healthcare settings like hospital emergency rooms. Whereas community health centers are the front lines of emerging healthcare crises, providing access to care for our nation's veterans, addressing opioid epidemic and responding to the public health threats in the wake of natural disasters. Community health centers operate close to one thousand mobile units, providing accessible health services in hundreds of rural and urban communities. Whereas National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate America's more than fourteen hundred community health center organizations with over fourteen thousand service delivery sites, including over three thousand schools. We honor their dedicated staff, board members, patients and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health centers opened their doors more than fifty years ago. Whereas during National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's community health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present and future of America's healthcare system. Now therefore, I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of Hallstead, do hereby proclaim August sixth through the twelfth, twenty twenty-three as National Health Center Week. I encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting their local health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's community health centers and the communities they serve. And to celebrate locally, please go to health ministries and ask for Brody Flavin. And take up some of his time for the day.
Absolutely.
All right, let's move on to our city manager report, and Ethan, you can feel free to run right into your financial report.
Sure. I just want to start to echo the governing bodies comments, thanking the old settlers committee members and all the volunteers for another fantastic old settlers. I also want to recognize all the city staff and departments for all the work they do behind the scenes to support those volunteers in getting the city ready and preparing for the multiple activities that occur throughout the weekend. Beyond old settlers related activities, some other notable things. Our newest full-time police officer, Officer Manning, is here, he's with us tonight, actually. He started, we want to welcome to him as he begins his training and tenure here at Hallstead. Currently, we also have two applicants that are going through the pre-employment process to fill open positions in Public Works. Although it was in the consent agenda, I want to point out that the city's continuing disclosure requirements and applicable financial data, which are a part of our bond responsibilities, were filed by their annual due date, and thank city clerk Wade for her efforts there. The city has exceeded forty golf cart registrations, which is a new high number for the number of registered carts within the city. Public Works completed another hydrant replacement for a leaking fire hydrant, and then we'll be moving on to new hydrant installations along Hallstead Road as other projects allow. Public Works also began work on limb cleanup following last week's storms, will be going through the city this week. So just asking residents to please have their limbs curbside as soon as possible, and please no limbs larger than fourteen feet. Wedgewood and Parks and Recreation have been working on playing surface maintenance, including spraying and irrigation adjustments, especially in light of the weather we were having. Police Department should be receiving the new patrol vehicle in the coming weeks, following the final upfitting and the beast evidence software system has been put into use. Hallstead Fire EMS will be donating an A E D to the Junior Dragon Football Program for their use going forward. We also now have a VIN number for our new ambulance, so we are seeing some forward progress there, even though we won't have possession of that unit until twenty twenty-four or even twenty twenty-five. Progress continues on several ongoing city projects. The final walkthrough for the ninth walnut reconstruction should be taking place sometime this week. Concrete continues to be poured for the Main Street, Fourteenth Street projects, and they hopefully they hopefully, uh, will begin continuing towards Tenth Street on Main. Ideatech has started working on some of the boring work that, uh, they need to do to run the dedicated fiber lines for the city's internal fiber network. Uh, the Holstead Library should also hopefully be moving forward with their carpet installation soon, uh, which will mean that all of the seed grant projects will be finished and that process can be finalized. Uh, and just as I brought up the Ninth and Walnut reconstruction, I did make notes of, of the comments made during public forum regarding that project, and we'll be sure to visit with the contractor on those concerns. Um, and then looking forward, uh, staff continue to work with Lockner on the Safe Routes to School project and are working with them also on a potential cost share project to submit for grant funding this fall. And that is all for the manager's report, unless there's any questions. And going into the financial report, uh, in light of the second quarter report given last meeting, I'll keep it very brief. Expenditures continue to trend around five percent or more below our expectations for the year, and revenues are at or exceeding expectations. Year-to-date cash position for the city across all funds improved by around three hundred thousand, the majority of that's in the general fund. As has been noted previously, those funds, uh, that are in negative positions compared to the 2022 fiscal year are due to anticipated spending down such as in the gas fund, or due to the timing of projects such as street ceiling compared to previous years. City's utility funds continue operating overall in a healthy manner, non-budgeted capital funds are building reserves, or spending down for capital projects as projected. I will note that next month, uh, for the report, you should see a notable drop in the road improvement project, uh, as we pay for the Ninth and Walnut project. And all funds remain within budget authority and their cash basis parameters, and all scheduled budget transfers between funds have been able to be made at this point in our fiscal year. And that is all I have for finances, unless there are questions.
Anybody have any questions of either of Ethan's reports?
No.
Well, if not, that finishes up our agenda for this evening, council, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, we are adjourned, thank you, council.